Good morning, I'd like to go ahead and call the Planning Commission to order, and if you'd all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could the roll be called, please?
Commissioner Leo Molitor.
Present.
Chair Bill Bartels.
Present.
Vice Chair Richard Rodriguez.
Here.
Come now to a time for public comments, so time set aside for comments by citizens on matter that's not appearing on the agenda. I have no speaker cards. Moving on, approval of the April 17th minutes.
I move approval.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and it's approved. Now we come to item six, LU-06-0031, the Regional Sanitation District.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is, for the record, my name is Christina Witzseri, and I am the Planner with the Ventura County Planning Division. Before you today, we're going to hear the project, LU-06-0031, the Ventura Regional Sanitation Office Operation and Maintenance Center. Before I begin my presentation, I'd like to enter into the public record for your consideration an errata to the Planning Commission staff report dated May 7th, which denotes the updated order of exhibits for the project and the addition of Exhibit 9, the phased site plan. The purpose of this is to be internally consistent throughout the staff report and the conditions. Upon the determination here today and before the zoning clearance is issued for use inauguration, the conditions will be revised to show these updated site plans and whatnot. So, a brief history of the project. CAP 3650 was approved in 1978 for the use of the site as a landfill, and also the addition of approximately 3,000 square feet of accessory structures. Ballard landfill closed in 1996, and the post closure maintenance plan is still in effect today and will be used in part with this project before you today. In 2005, MOD 1 was approved for the existing site to be used as an operation and maintenance center by the Regional Sanitation District. So before you receive a site plan, and the, oops, the Santa Clara River abuts the property to the north, Victoria Avenue is here, not on the site plan, but to the south is West Gonzalez Road, and the access roads to the site is right here, through this smaller road here. Ballard landfill covers both parcels, but the subject property is going to be just one parcel. The subject parcel is 86 acres in size, but the CUP area for this project is only 1.7 acres. The zoning for the parcel is open space 80 acres, and the general patent designation is open space. So, as we all know, the site is requested by the Ventura Regional Sanitation District to use it as a field office and primary staging area for relocated district employees. This is just a more in-depth site plan showing the overall landfill site as with the project site, which is 1.7 acres, as I said before. There's some zoning information for you. So this is the proposed site plan, this is Exhibit 9, the phased site plan in your errata before you today. The access road is seen through here, it has gravel on it right now, and it will be paved in the future at Phase 2 of this project. This, oops, sorry. The wastewater holding tank is here, the water tank for the site is here. There are two parking lots on the site, Parking Lot 1 is here, and Parking Lot 2 is here. Parking Lot 2 will be, both parking lots will be, have gravel put on them at later point Phase 2 in the project. The parking lot is for district vehicles and for the vehicles that are going to be used by, personal vehicles for the staff that are going to be relocated here. This structure right here is the new field office, which will house a lunchroom, conference room, and will have an exterior canopy attached to it. This is the existing office and maintenance center, which currently holds the garage as well as the office and laboratory for employees there as of right now. Here is the temporary office trailer, which will be removed when construction is finished, and this is the bulk fuel tank, which on the previous exhibited site plans shows it to be here, but this is the correct location of it. And at the end of the second parking lot is the comic storage containers. Some pictures of the site, this is the access road going into the site, you see the landfill in the background here. This is the road as well, and in the background you see the existing office and maintenance center. This is the first parking lot, which will be, have gravel on it at the end of Phase 2. The water tank showing signage as to what it is, and the conditions of the project say that this need to be on concrete, and currently it is. This is the existing office and maintenance building with district vehicles and personnel vehicles shown. This is the garage where light maintenance work will be done, and here are the offices and whatnot. This is the existing, the office and maintenance building is over here, and this is where the new field office is going to be located. And you see that the perimeter of the site is enclosed with a chain link fence. This is the temporary office trailer with the office and maintenance building in the background. The second parking lot, with the comic storage containers in the background. Some of the project conditions that I thought were worth mentioning are that the hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. A maximum of 20 employees are permitted onsite on a daily basis, but typically only six will be there on a consistent basis. As I said in previously my presentation, that the Ballard landfill post closure maintenance plan, which was approved under the original CUP, is to remain in effect in full force, and light vehicle maintenance of district vehicles only will be permitted in the office and maintenance building. The negative, the environmental document for this project is a negative declaration. The Ventura Regional Sanitation District actually completed, circulated, and adopted the findings of the negative declaration, which, and the county, so they acted as the lead agency. The County of Ventura is the responsible agency, and they were allowed to comment on the responses to the initial study. And all agreed that it was a negative declaration. So recommended actions for the project for you to consider is to find on the basis of the negative declaration, including the initial study and responses to comments attached thereto, and any comments received, that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have significant effects on the environment, and that the negative declaration is adequate for use by the county for these CUP purposes, and certify that the commission has read and considered the information contained in the final negative declaration dated July 21st, 2007, and that was prepared by the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, and find based on the evidence presented in the staff report and at the hearing today, that the permit stands as our met, and adopt a resolution adopting the proposed findings, Section B, and approving the conditions as shown in Exhibit 3. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lawler? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sharkey, who is with the Ventura Regional Sanitation District.
Before you do, are there any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner Molitor?
Christina, have we received any other public comments since the agenda was published?
No, no public comments have been received.
Thank you.
Richard? Yes, as I read the text, I'm confused by a lot of the, a lot of the numbers, I guess, and I see contradictions, and I don't, I'm not sure whether they're errors or whether it wasn't proofed correctly. I can go through them now or deal with them later, however you please.
I think identify them, and then staff, give staff a chance to respond.
Okay.
While we're hearing the rest of the presentation.
Okay, on page 7, under new field office, it talks about the two modular units adding 2,880 square feet, which are 15 feet in height. And on page 11, it says that the proposed project will add approximately 38,640 square feet of structure to the existing project. I need clarification on that. On page 8, under new wastewater holding tank, it references a septic tank of 1,000 gallons for this project, yet on page 13, it talks about a 5 gallon septic tank. I'm confused there. There's also a comment a couple of times in your text, talks about adding 46 additional parking spaces, yet on page 9, under parking, it identifies 35 parking spaces to be provided. Those are the immediate ones I see right now that I can recall.
Okay.
Why don't we go ahead and hear from Mr. Sharkey, and then we'll, staff can respond.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I'm John Sharkey, I'm the Chair of the Regional Sanitation and District Board, I'm also the Mayor Potem of the City of Portland, Illinois, and the past Chair of the Air Pollution Control Board. And it's a pleasure to be here today, thank you for squeezing us in on your busy agenda, and we appreciate the timeliness with which this is being heard. First of all, I think the staff report is excellent, your staff generally does a very good job, and we've always been very happy to work with them, and they're serving the public very well. I'd like to just briefly touch on some of the highlights, why the district thinks this is a good idea, and why I personally think this is a good project. What this does is allow the district to consolidate operations onto property that is owned by the district, making use of our property, and this serves our constituents, my constituents, who are the same as yours, by not only saving costs for VRSD, but it also, it will remove approximately 20,000 medium truck miles a year off the roads. We estimate that as about 15 tons of carbon reduction, carbon emission reductions. So there is an absolute definable air quality benefit from this. The facility is 100% solar powered, it's off the grid, it's self-sufficient as far as energy use goes, and as far as few impacts, it's not visible from off-site. This is a way to make a good productive use of property that is owned by the district, it is a cost savings to our constituents, and it is an environmental positive. So, you know, I urge this body to support the staff recommendation. If you have any questions, we have Mr. Lawler, our General Manager, and Mr. Capron, who's our engineer, if you really want to get deep into this. Thank you.
Any questions?
Did you want to respond to Commissioner Rodriguez's comments before I have a couple of questions?
Well, I'm not going to throw numbers off the top of my head, maybe Mr. Capron and Mr. Lawler could help out with that.
I can wait for them.
Sure.
Mr. Lawler or Mr. Capron, do you want to take on, Commissioner Molitor does have some questions, and I have a couple.
Good morning gentlemen, do I need a card?
I would open the public hearing, if you could turn in a card after you speak, that would be fun.
Oh, thank you.
And I'd open the public hearing.
I'm Mark Haebron, Senior Engineer with the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, and I'll turn in the card right after the meeting. Your first question was the 3,425 square feet on page 7? I'm not sure I wrote them those down.
2,880 square feet of modulars to be added. Page 7, and on page 11, paragraph 2, the paragraph starting neighboring parcels, it says that the proposed project will add approximately 38,640 square feet of structure to the existing site. I need clarification?
The, that would be a big difference. No, the 38,000 square feet would apply to paved surface or something, that's not the, our structures, we have two modular structures. We initially had some confusion because we had two modular structures with a patio spaced between them, which also had a 400-ish square foot lunch canopy. And so we had some numbers, you could express that a couple different ways. But the 38,000 square feet is a, must have come out of a total affected area of square footage, that's not a, our buildings are only, I want to say 2,400 times 2, this same 3,425 square feet is the structure.
What is it?
So that's the answer, the, on page 7, we have an existing 3,425 square feet, and then somewhere in here it said how many square feet of new. New field office.
Under new field office is the bottom of the page.
Down the bottom. Cover approximately 4,000 square feet of area, and that 4,000 square feet includes the patio, which is only partly covered, but it's new.
So the total project, the lunch canopy or whatever, however is described, plus the structures, are approximately 4,000 square feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And 38,000 is just a number of some other stuff, maybe that includes the existing, the total size of the area, yeah, that's what I thought.
What, what is?
That.
The 38, oh, so this is, okay, so what I'm reading on page 7, or 11, excuse me, is an error, when it says moreover the proposed project will add approximately 38,640 square feet of structure?
I wouldn't say it's an error, I would say it's a miscommunication and unclarity of exactly what the 38,000 is.
Yeah, it's a major miscommunication.
Yeah.
Sorry, my name is Jason Seeger, I'm the Environmental Analyst for the district, and want to prepare the initial study for the project, I can help clarify that.
Well, can somebody correct that sentence then? What it's supposed to?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Rodriguez, we can correct the sentence.
Okay.
It comes from the initial study, and the figure is not to be meant towards the structures, it's not structures, so we will correct the sentence of structures.
Okay, great, thank you.
We'll reword it really quickly and then get it back to you.
Thank you.
It's actually lot coverage or, you know, square footage added to.
The existing.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
We'll reword it.
Thank you. And the other question, what page was, that was page 13? That 5 gallons refers to, when you have a fueling station, you need to have a way to capture the, any possible leakage spillage or any stuff like that, and that refers to a, and the word septic tank is not correct, so it would be.
What is the correct word?
What's the correct term for a?
It would just be like a catch basin.
There's a, there's a secondary containment, which would be the whole.
That's around the fuel thing, but you have some sort of capture.
Right, yeah, it would be like a whole, a capture, a holding tank on stop, on the fuel pad, the bulk tank will be, is self-enclosed, 2,000 gallons, will be on a captured secondary containment pad, and this is the holding tank for anything that would spill, would go to a tank that would.
Okay, I'm just looking for the correct description of it.
I would say secondary containment, a secondary spill containment tank.
If we could get verbiage for that. Commissioner Molitor? Or, Richard? Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
No, I don't. I visited the site on Wednesday, and I saw two tanks above ground. One of them is a water tank, and what's the other one?
They're both water tanks, the blue tank that you saw, the metal tank, is the 5,000 gallon fire drafting tank for drafting hydrant, so that's just fire water. The 5,000 gallon poly tank is the powerable water supply and the sprinkler supply for the buildings.
Okay. As I was coming up to that little house in the middle of the road, which used to monitor trucks coming in and out of the landfill, just beyond that, to my left, there's a big drop, and there's water standing in there. Does that have any bearing on this? I mean, is that a catch basin or something, or can that flood, or?
That's our neighbor's property, they put in large retention basins for the Grove Link, which is our neighbor directly to the south. Those are catch basins, they, all their runoff water during storm events go into those retention basins, so they can now, the water can percolate down, it doesn't come onto our site.
Okay.
In the past, it used to come to our site, and we had issues with flooding, so as neighbors, they put in detention basins to retain their stormwater.
So your property actually begins where the gravel road starts?
That's correct.
That's your property?
Yes.
Okay. Would this site in the future ever sustain agriculture again?
No, not.
Because of the landfill?
Because of the landfill, yes.
Okay.
Because of your gas line.
You couldn't use, they couldn't put greenhouses on it or things like that, like the property coming in? I mean, it's totally useless for agriculture at this point?
I believe so, yes. The Integrated Waste Management Board won't allow us to plant any vegetation that could go, because we have a clay cap.
Let's clarify that a little bit. You said ever, and after many, many years, the methane won't be coming off. The methane is bad for the roots of the plants, anyway. So if you want to go out far enough, a century or two.
There are some landfills that I used to go by in Palos Verdes, and they had methane burning, they burned the methane coming off. Is that?
We have a collection system.
You have a collection system?
And a power plant, yes.
Okay.
You might have recalled the white pipes you could see in the pictures in the presentation, those were carrying landfill gas to a power plant.
Okay. I know it's, you're far enough from the river that you're not anticipating flooding, but what about in a 100-year flood? Has that been factored into, and you're okay with that?
Yes, we're, it was going back in the initial study, we have adequate drainage already to the facility, large outfalls to both sides that drain to a ditch. Two years ago, we did a Prop 13 project for point source pollution, where we increased the size of our drainage, we put in a sediment check dam to reduce that, plus we have vegetative growth, so that's almost like a biofilter on the way out to discharge at the Santa Clara River.
Okay, that's, I think that's all that I have. There was a question on page 76, that it does not qualify, let's look at page 76. Halfway down, under the big paragraph, it said this project does not qualify for the categorical exception from CEQA.
That's correct. That's why we prepared a negative declaration, we went through the initial study, that we're not called categorical, it's exemption because of the facility.
Okay, that's all that I have, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
On the parking availability, is it 46 or is it 35?
It is both, 35 is the east parking lot for personal vehicles, and 46 is the west parking lot for employee vehicles.
Okay, so the total number of parking spaces then will be 70, 80, 80?
That's correct, yes.
Approximately?
Yes.
Okay. It talked about groundwater intrusion, but what are we doing with a 1,000 gallon septic tank, and how is that impacting that?
We have an existing 1,000 gallon holding tank onsite for the building that is currently the structure, existing structure, we are going to be adding to that, we're bringing in a septic cooling system, it's not going to be some, no septic bleaching, it's just going to be a holding tank. We're Sanitation District, so we'll have a vacuum truck, you know, 2,000 gallon vacuum truck available onsite.
As part of your fleet?
As part of our fleet, and we also have a vacuum to sewer clean, so we'll be able to haul all waste offsite. This is just a holding tank system.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff response? Comments?
Just to clarify that one number, the 38,000, it comes from the project description in the negative declaration, and how it is meant to be used is to say, the current Ballard landfill OMC area is 35,307 square feet, it's the area, and then it goes on to say, the proposed project will add 38,640 square feet for a total project size of 1.70, I think that's what we were trying to get at.
Okay, so the text on page 11 just misstates the information.
Yeah, we'll clean it up.
Any other comments? Any other questions? Disclosures, Leo, you were?
I disclose that I visited the site on Wednesday.
Richard, disclosure?
I drive by this site almost on a daily basis, and my assumption is, because I'm at Victoria, my assumption is that when, excuse me, my assumption is that when the reference.
My assumption is that when a report references 1,000 square feet from existing dwellings, residence dwellings, it's, as the crow flies from the point of construction to the nearest residences, it just doesn't seem like a half mile on the street from entry to the residences at the corner there, Victoria Gonzalez. But that's what it is, huh? Okay, thank you.
No, I have no other comments.
It's a site I've driven by many times, have some passing awareness of. All right, any other comments? Close the public hearing, Commission? Let's move to recommended, recommended action. Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go build your office, Kim. Other discussion? Kim, to you.
I don't really have anything new to report since we met on April the 17th, do you have anything for me?
Yeah, I have a comment. You spoke last week about a report that Tom Berg had prepared on behalf of the board, or for the board on, well, variety topics, RMA-type topics. I happened to be surfing the webpage and got into the board's agenda the other day, and I ran across it, it makes very interesting reading, I think the board would find a good read of that executive summary if you could make that available to us.
Sure. Sure, 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 we'll do it.
Commissioner Molitor?
I think that was about 21 pages, Kim, excuse me.
Yes, yeah.
Have anything else? Just for next week's meeting, I would ask the Commission's indulgence, it's Student of the Month, and I'm going to be about 20 minutes late, so if we could just hold the meeting, that would be helpful. Anything else? How do you say your first name? Doniel? With the Commission's indulgence, I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Doniel for her first run, sitting there without anybody else in the room.
I second that.
I third it.
All right.
And. And I'd like meetings to start on time. I know next week we can't, but she was ready right on time. I appreciate that.
And Christina, thank you too. We stand adjourned.